What's that? Huh? Yes, I did. And they said that's not accurate.
I put them in my pocket. Really?
Yeah.
I did.
I don't know, but they're looking into that.
I happened to look at my email before I walked out the door.
I'm sorry, I can't do something wrong.
No, that's okay.
I didn't know.
Just it's better to clarify it so we know what's going on, right?
Yeah, right.
It can stay out.
Yeah, it'll be fine. I've got my eye on it.
There we go.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, sir. Hey, we got extra water. We'll let you read through that.
Oh, thank you.
How are you?
Thank you.
Good, how are you?
I'm fine. How's it going? Thank you. Thank you.
Here we go. Here we go. How are you doing? Six forty? Are you calling him or are you calling me?
There we go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, how are you? How are you?
How are you?
Good evening.
I just got over a little cold. I'm just being protective.
What's wrong with Donald? Is that a hint there?
I think so. I was, the clerk isn't at his chair, so I was waiting a quick second. The Chair will now call the November seventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lesko, can you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Here.
Alderwoman Nottriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson. Alderwoman Conley. Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Buscher.
Present.
Mayor Buscher, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to allow Alderwoman Conley to participate on the phone?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Alderwoman Conley, it is fine for you to join in on the phone.
Thank you.
Civility pledge. In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. The Chair will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three Special City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of the remaining ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion will carry. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion will carry. The Chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion will now carry. Agenda items two thousand twenty-three dash four three zero, two thousand twenty-three dash four three one.
We have to vote.
We didn't vote.
Oh, sorry. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's a roll call vote. My apologies, y'all. I'm just moving right along. Alderwoman Conley, do you vote yea or nay on the passing of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. So that would be nine voting yes, none voting no. Agenda items two thousand twenty-three dash four three zero, two thousand twenty-three dash four three one, two thousand twenty-three dash four three two, and two thousand twenty-three dash four four three, and two thousand twenty-three dash four five one remain tabled or in committee. Does anyone have anything they need to bring up on any of these items that are tabled or in committee?
Just a matter of point of order.
Yes, sir. Alderman Redpath.
Do we have a, are any of these ready to expire after the agenda? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. Um, the, the, uh, we need to keep the two months' extension for the auto parts since, didn't we pass that? Didn't we pass the overall?
I'm sorry. Didn't we, didn't we pass the, the extension?
I'll ask the Budget Director how she feels about that.
Yes, we passed that.
Okay. So we did pass it. So is it okay purchasing Lesko to withdraw? Okay.
I make a motion to withdraw then.
Second.
Okay. So that is two thousand twenty-three dash four.
Four five one.
Four five one. Motion to withdraw in a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, just aye. Okay. All those in favor of removing that from the agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alderwoman Conley voted yes as well.
And Mayor, one other thing on the four four three.
That motion passed. Yes, go ahead for four four three.
I know we had, we had held it to look at possible new vehicle. Did, where are we at on that? Or, um, have we gotten any progress or? I don't want to leave, leave them out hanging without a grapple truck one way or the other.
We can check on that and get back with you. Would that be okay?
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure we, we didn't let this just kind of fall off.
Yes, sir. Any other items that are tabled or in committee? Uh, Alderman Gregory.
Yes, thank you. Um, is there any updated information on the signed agreement between the city and D C E O for these four thirty, four thirty-one, and four thirty-two with the police department?
I know that I do not see anyone here for the police department, so I'm going to speak on their behalf. So you can yank my till later if I am wrong. But I did, I was incorporated on an email that Deputy Chief Stunkel sent to D C E O asking for information needed to make those changes, and I think he's waiting for some information to go back and forth.
Okay. Thank you.
D C Stunkel did initiate that.
Thank you.
Saw the same, right? Okay. Anyone else to discuss any items tabled or remaining in committee? Okay. The next item on the agenda is item number two thousand twenty-three dash four nine four. An ordinance approving a moratorium on the enforcement of the residency requirement in chapter thirty-six, section thirty-six point zero five of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand twenty-three dash four nine four on final passage.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. There's also in front of you an amendment on the, on your desk for this particular ordinance. So the Chair will entertain a motion to amend agenda item number two thousand twenty-three dash four nine four with that amendment that's in front of it.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on the amendment. Any discussion on the proposed amendment?
Can someone explain the amendment, please?
Yes, I was asked to prepare an amendment that essentially grandfathers in, anybody who lives outside of the city when they're hired during this moratorium or who moves outside of the city during this moratorium. So anybody who has a residence outside of the city while this moratorium is in place will be grandfathered in when it is lifted based on, on this, based on this amendment.
Who sponsored that ordinance?
The, the amendment was proposed by.
Alderman Donilon.
Alderman Donilon, based on our discussion at the Committee of the Hole meeting.
That's correct.
So we're on discussion for the amendment right now. Any other discussion from the council on the amendment? Are those of you signed up to speak for the amendment or for the ordinance itself?
Ordinance.
Ordinance or amendment?
Um, I could speak to the amendment. I thought you also mentioned a timeline, or maybe that was Alderwoman Conley.
It's actually Alderman Carlson, who's on his way here right now, so.
Okay.
If he gets here, we'll add it.
Any other discussion on the amendment? We're going there first.
Mayor, if I can.
Yes, Alderman Donilon.
Unless, I didn't push my buttons, so.
Alderman Nottriano, are you done?
I mean, it's fine. It's fine.
Okay.
Mayor, just briefly, you know, I brought this up at the Committee of the Hole. My concern about, you know, obviously if the moratorium were to go into effect and people were to be hired and we didn't have some kind of grandfathering clause in there, what would be the point of having a moratorium? Because the logic of having a moratorium is attracting people, greater masses, to come and apply for certain jobs. And, and I thought this was important to make it clear and not scare people off that, which is the intent of trying to attract people that normally wouldn't come here, so. Really that simple.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, and on, I guess this is part of it. Right now, in first reading, we got a two thousand twenty-three, five twenty-one. It's basically making a, making a preference for someone that lives in the city over someone that, say, does not live in the city proper for hiring. Is there, is there a reason why that can't be part of an amendment for this as well instead of being a full-fledged ordinance or? Because what that'll, it's, to me, it's all the same. I mean, if it has to wait, if we have to wait, we can do that, but.
That could be.
Can I speak to that?
Alderwoman Conley? Then we'll let Corporation Council speak. Go ahead, Alderwoman Conley.
If, if I could, um, and thank you, Alderman Hanauer. I, I appreciate that might be something that we would want to add to the moratorium. My, my thought with proposing that as a separate standalone ordinance is that the moratorium itself is not a reversal of the residency requirement. It's a pause for right now. So I'd like to have a more, have that Springfield residents hiring preference be part of a, a permanent part of, of our, our hiring practices as opposed to only connect the two of the moratorium. So I, I would think that that could easily be a part of the moratorium too, just to cover the two-week lag between the next meeting. But that was my, my, kind of my process, seeing why it should be separate. And I apologize for not reaching out to you before now. I was, um, I, I just apologize for not getting back to you sooner.
Hey, we'll just leave it. No big deal.
I hope everyone could hear me.
Yes, we can hear you great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I can't hear very well.
It, it can be an amendment if, if that would be what the council chooses, but we can also wait the two weeks. Yep.
Okay. Anyone else want to raise their hand if they have a discussion in the council horseshoe about the amendment? I just don't want to skip you. Okay. So we have a motion in a second for the amendment. Let's take a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
One nay or two nays?
Roll call. Roll call. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
No.
Alderman Williams.
No.
Alderman Rockford.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman Nottriano.
Aye.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donilon.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Seven ayes and two nays, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk Lesko. Now we have discussion on the ordinance as amended. So the first thing we will do is let those in the horseshoe speak first that have signed up to speak. So in order, we have Alderman Rockford.
Do we need to make a motion as amended first? Or has that already been done?
We made.
We, we need to make a motion as amended first.
Sorry. Motion to accept the ordinance as amended.
Motion to move it as amended.
Second.
First and the second. All those in favor, just to, well, now we're having a discussion, sorry. Alderman Rockford, you're the first one signed up to speak on my cue, so we're going to go with you first.
Okay. I got a question for C W L P and Public Works. Two weeks ago, when we talked about this, that we were not able to get city residents to apply for these positions. I don't know, Doug's here or Scott or whoever. Can you tell me how many, how many linemen C W L P is down right now?
Well, from down being a relative term, but from the peak before we had all the budget issues, finance issues with the electric division, we had it close to eighty-five to ninety linemen. That wasn't just line department. That's the whole electric side of the I B W contract. Today, we're in the fifty-five to sixty range. I don't have the exact number in front of me.
Okay. So, so when, when, were these positions, alignment positions budgeted for in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four? How many positions were budgeted for?
Total.
Do we know that?
Off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
Um, I can, I can tell you we budgeted for, I think it was eight apprentices that were hired this year.
Okay. Eight, eight apprentices, but no journeyman?
We did leave, we did budget for two journeymen this year.
Two journeymen?
Yes.
Um, so my, my question is, is, is how are we supposed to recoup and replenish our, our linemen when we're not even budgeting for positions? When we know that retirements and we know that people are going to be leaving, and we don't fill positions? I, I don't understand when we, we say that people don't, don't apply for these jobs. If there's no jobs budgeted and, and we don't have the money there, how are we, how are we going to pay people to? And, and we, and we say we, we need linemen. You know, not every year are we going to have a storm like we did, but, but again, now all of a sudden, we need, we need linemen and we don't even have budgeted positions.
This isn't all of a sudden. This, this.
No, I, I understand that, Scott, but, but this has been going on for years. And, and my question is, is why do we drag our feet when it comes to hiring people? Especially linemen who are minutemen, who are the people that we rely on the most to, to get this, the jobs done, and, and we don't have bodies.
So historically, getting linemen has been hard. Getting journeyman linemen is, is difficult. So we have posted it. We posted, I think this is the second or third time we've posted it, and we finally have two qualified candidates, possibly a third qualified candidate that we're going to interview. I think it's next week. So we've posted it. We didn't budget because we weren't getting applicants. From the apprentice standpoint, to build back to linemen, that is, we can, we typically, from a construction side, we don't want to get more than six linemen, and we wait every two years. That is because of apprenticeship and training and, and the requirements that we have, the manpower to be able to train them. So part of it is also a ratio that's in the contract. If we have too many apprentices on site, I don't have enough journeyman or foreman to, to effectively train them. So that, we've got a chart here that's kind of laid out, but you can see every two years where we're hiring apprentices, and that's been ongoing for quite a while.
But is it, is it, there a statute, you know, within the, the I B W that says you, you have to have so many journeymen per? There's nothing like that.
Well, journeyman per apprentice.
Per apprenticeship.
It's.
So many, so many journeymen per, for every apprentice.
It's actually the other way. There's.
Okay.
Minimum or a maximum number of apprentices per journeyman.
For, for journeyman.
For, for foreman, actually, not journeyman. The way it lays out, there's a, there's apprentices and journeyman per foreman. So, yes. Ultimately, there is a ratio there that has to be maintained.
Okay. So, so I, you know, that, that, okay, that answers my question about the, the linemen. But for, you know, Public Works, when I hear about Public Works not being able to, to get qualified help or the, the Springfield residents not stepping up and want to become a, a city employee, I don't, I don't buy that. I don't, you know, and I, I don't know why residency has anything to do with that, because I, I could tell you there's people that work for the, that live in the city of Springfield who love to work for the, for the city. So again, I, I don't know how many people were down at, at Public Works.
We just, actually just hired a number of truck driver, truck driver labors. I think eight or nine of them we hired probably in the last six weeks. And we had maybe fifteen, sixteen applicants. So we're short a few people here and there. I think there were short a couple at the, at the sewer barn, and there may be several administrative positions that we're short right now.
But, you know, and I'm, and I'm just talking with Public Works. I know there's, I know there's accountants. I know there's engineers. I know there's a lot of different areas within the department that need, need to be addressed, but I just, I, I find it hard to believe that nobody wants to work for the city of Springfield. And, and to say that we need to draw from the outside to bring them in, I think that we got enough qualified people within City of Springfield to fill these positions. And that's my, that's my take.
Yes, sir.
So thank you.
Point of order. Corporation Council, I know our rules state that we have to go in order on, on request to speak, but a lot of times that the people who sign up to request to speak are talking to the ordinance in general. I think we ought to have a proposal or a, a rule that allows us to interject in the discussion. Alderman Rockford has some valid questions and that I'd like to interject and talk to Scott Rogers on, on that, but I have to wait in line. Five people who may not have questions in front of me. So is that something we have to change our rules on or can we, how do we do this?
So the, the Chair can recognize a valid question based on a question that comes up, but the Chair also has the right to maintain order. So it would be up to the Chair's discretion on how she questions.
My point being is that I would have to wait in line for, for people who don't have the same questions for that, for that witness. My point is, is that I wanted to interject and ask questions of Mr. Rogers also, but I can't do that because I'm not on the list. I can get on the list, but then we get beyond the questions, if that makes sense.
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm first on the list. I'd be happy to, to allow Alderman Redpath.
Right. The other two others in front of you have allowed him to ask Scott Rogers a question. Are you okay with that as well? Uh, sure. Okay. Mr. Rogers, do you mind coming back up? So Alderman Redpath can ask you.
I'm not trying to butt in front of anybody, but I have questions for this witness and I, I would like to hear it. So what is the ideal number for, you gave us a number of, of the, a number of employees that fall under this, this category, but you're including in there engineers and, and other administrative type people. I want to know how many linemen that we have and what is the criteria and where do you want to get to?
The number I gave was linemen only. Didn't include engineers, accountants, I T, didn't include any of that. It was only linemen. That's a good question. So back when we were close to a hundred, we had a lot more construction going on. Today, we don't have as much construction, new construction that we're doing. Part of that is we don't have the staff. Part of that is just economics. We have a plan laid out to be able to, currently with the retirements, as, as Mr. Rockford said, as Alderman Rockford said, we are flat for a couple of years. We've been declining over the last five or six years. And it was in my budget presentation. I should have brought it, but I didn't. But we'll be flat for the next four years, and then we will start growing with projected retirements.
And obviously, if you have more apprentices than you do journeymen to train them, that's not a, a appropriate way to handle business.
And that's why we do it every other year.
So, so we got to get to the point where we have enough journeymen to bring enough apprentices in underneath, and that's what this whole thing's about, right?
Yeah. And if you want, HR put together a trend.
Please.
Thank you.
Nicole's helping, coming to help you, Scott.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Please come to the microphone.
Thank you, ma'am.
So the overall applications, when you look at the total applicants, those are actually for selected position, but we really wanted to focus on what has happened with applications for the lineman positions in the years preceding and then following the residency requirement. And so you've got those numbers, and you can see that red line where the residency hit, and you can see the trends that have happened both in the number of applicants and then in the number of people who are qualified applicants. And so those trends have gone, gone down. And so this, I thought, was a beautiful picture. While I brought it, I'm not the creator, but it does a wonderful job at a glance of being able to see the trends that I will be speaking to about application.
So I have something on this.
On the?
On, on this chart.
Yeah, we just got rules up, because so do I.
Yes, Alderwoman. I, I would just like to point out, or maybe you just asked for clarification, any ideas about what happened in the economy in the Springfield metro area and the Greater United States, two thousand seventeen onward?
Yeah, yes. No, that our trends are not our own, we're not the only ones with these trends. Nor are we the only ones who are having a hard time with recruiting right now. Nor are we the only ones who are, are having people make employment decisions by just not showing up. That's a new trend. That has been happening more frequently than it ever has in my three and a half, four decades of managing human resources. So it is reflective of the trends that are happening, but it also is a math problem whenever you're doing recruitment. So we have people who get to the date of hire and just don't come in, and then we're calling them and finding out they made a different decision. And that's happening with a greater frequency, but not just here at the City of Springfield. It's happening everywhere as it relates to employment. But it's a, it's a math equation of ensuring that we've got those people. So yes, absolutely. Absolutely. We are reflective of what's going on in our world. So it, it just makes it tougher. So thanks for the clarification.
Alderman Redpath, are you?
I'm through. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Alderman Donilon.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening, and this is an important issue for the city, important issue needless to say for the council this evening. And I, I want to say before I get started is I, I want to also thank you all for the discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago. I thought that was a fruitful discussion. It's one of these topics that obviously sometimes we have to make hard decisions and, but I'm so glad that the, the topic of us being in a different situation was brought up, Alderwoman, because, I mean, needless to say, you know, I speak with a restaurant owner in Ward Nine just recently, and this particular restaurant bar is not open on Mondays anymore. And the reason is because of the difficulty in hiring. And I know that's a restaurant bar, that's not the City of Springfield, so it isn't apples to apples. However, what has happened, you know, we all know about COVID nineteen, and it absolutely changed the whole scenario that we're all presented with. It is truly a different world. It just is, it's different than it was in two thousand twelve. It's different than it was in two thousand twenty-one. And just, just to give you some examples, this is the, this is the topic that most concerned me. I remember when I worked in the mayor's office years ago, we had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of applicants to become a firefighter. And I was sent this information this morning by Local Thirty-seven. I thought it was, it kind of tells the story. It doesn't go all the way back to the early two thousands, but in two thousand sixteen, we had seven hundred and thirty-four applicants to try to be a firefighter. Twenty eighteen, six thirty-nine. Two thousand twenty-one, five hundred. Two thousand twenty-two, the most recent, three fifteen. Okay, those are the applicants. So it went from seven thirty-four to three fifteen from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-two. And those aren't the ones that make it through the process, my understanding is, those are just the applicants. Now think about that. There's lots of reasons why. I think COVID nineteen was a part of it. I think just, you know, the. I think, uh, uh, just, you know, the struggle with attracting people that you alluded to earlier, just nationwide. Some people just evidently don't want to work. Um, I, I don't have the magic, magic eight ball, but my point is, is I, I take this topic very seriously. And we have to think about ways to do things differently and outside the box. And this ordinance doesn't eliminate, uh, residency, it just kind of puts a timeout on it. And I think it's something that we should strongly consider and see if it works, see what happens. Look at the numbers down the road and then we have something definitive to look at. That's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Alderwoman Notrino.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, yeah, th, thank you for, um, bringing that up, Alderman Donlin. Uh, it is, we are in a, a very tough spot. Um, it's hard to find workers everywhere right now. Um, so I, I have a few things. So I unfortunately wasn't approached, uh, about the moratorium other than what was put forward on, um, first reading and the description of the ordinance. Um, so I'm sort of in the dark when it comes to the intent and objectives of the moratorium. But the description of the ordinance says we must end the residency requirement because current shortages in the labor and housing market make it impractical to enforce by limiting the pool of qualified candidates, applicants in positions across all departments. So, last week, our sponsors of this ordinance mentioned that there were certain bargaining unit positions that had shortages. Uh, and I've spoken to, um, these unions, uh, firefighters, IBW, uh, ASW. I'm, uh, aware that they're having problems with recruitment. Um, and so my, I'm not going to argue about the need, um, for hiring there. Um, but as I discovered in my research of, of this, uh, moratorium, what we do tonight, this moratorium does not affect bargaining unit employees. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, we would, we would offer the memorandum of understanding, but counsel by action can't change our collective bargaining agreements.
Right.
That's an administrative rule.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you for that clarification. And so my question is, um, if we realize these shortages, perhaps, you know, if I'd been included in the discussion, I would have suggested, uh, let's go ahead with these MOUs for IBW and the firefighters, uh, people who are responsible for our life safety, um, right now, instead of, uh, waiting on this or, or doing this.
Is that mobile?
Um.
I would like to speak to that. I'm not going to go against city ordinance.
Well.
Me signing an MOU like that would be defying the ordinance that was passed.
No, no, the corporation counsel has advised that you can, uh.
The fire ordinances?
No, you can change collective bargaining languages, language with an MOU at any time.
Oh, no, you can't.
If the parties are in agreement.
I'd like to clarify that. We can't, the, the mayor does not have the authority to change the, change the terms of a collective bargaining agreement. But if, if this passes, then the interpretation or the application of the moratorium could be achieved through memorandums of understanding executed by the mayor and the unions. But right now, the union contracts which contain the, which contain, um, language similar to our residency requirement could not be changed by the mayor, the same as the mayor couldn't change wages or couldn't change, um, you know, hour, change to a 40-hour work week.
So I, um, believe in the email exchange that we had yesterday, you had said that because this doesn't impact the bargaining agreements, it's not necessary. So we could do the MOUs without this moratorium.
City, city council would have to pass those.
Okay, I mean, sure. Well, that's the, one way to do it.
Right, but cor, correct, yeah. The city council would have, if that were the preference of city council, we would need to prepare the memorandums of understanding with the unions that were interested and then those would come to the city council as a vote. That is correct.
Yeah, I, I would have offered that suggestion. Um, just wanted to throw that out there. Um, so. So what, uh, bargaining units do you plan to enter MOUs with after we sign this?
All of them.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. And I'm, have more questions. Um, that's good to know. So, um, back to the point of the struggle in hiring. Um, it's not going to be easy to fill all of our positions that are vacant, bargaining unit or otherwise. Um, because according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, our city, which is the lynchpin of a metropolitan statistical area that includes Sangamon and Menards Counties, has, uh, record low unemployment and has had record low unemployment, um, since about 2017. Um, and so what we're doing here is, um, I, I guess I don't know where these, um, where these employees are going to come from, right? It appears to me that everyone in Sangamon and Menard Counties who wants to work, uh, is currently employed. And, um, so are, if you look at the, uh, BLS statistics for, uh, Peoria and Bloomington and Champaign, and even Decatur, their, uh, unemployment rates are also at record lows. Uh, so I just don't know that there are, um, people out to be gotten, um, by lifting this moratorium. Um, so what have we done to make jobs at the city of Springfield, um, more attractive?
Are you asking the chair a question?
Yes.
Well, our director of HR is here, but you are aware I've only been the mayor for six months, right?
Oh, no, 100%, absolutely. Gotcha.
So I can only speak for six months.
Absolutely.
Since the moratorium was passed and statistics show applications have gone down since it was passed. So I can only speak for since I've been here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we, look, I'll let Nikki come up and maybe speak to that.
Yeah, just questions about.
I'm sorry, Director Baker.
Peter is fine. Um, today is my third month anniversary. So thanks for this. Um, I, and so to see what we're doing is that we have a lot of things that we're starting. So as I am looking at recruitment and the residency requirement, it won't allow my staff to just start eating bonbons. This is not going to fix all the challenges from a recruitment or identifying how we can meet talent and how we can entice them to come. With the record unemployment, and you are absolutely right, those numbers tell us that we are probably pulling for people who have jobs. So we're not looking for the people who are not employed because they don't have the requisite skills for many of the positions. We are looking to get them to make a change in their employment. And that is a different type of outreach than what you do when you have a large unemployment and you have a pool of candidates who are actively looking. We've got to make connections that entice them to just update their resume. Because often that's the piece that says, oh, if I apply for that job, I got to write a new resume. I've got to do a cover letter, I've got to be prepared. So we're currently identifying what those recruitment relationships can be, both in the city and in surrounding areas, and how can we make relationships? How can we get them to know us? So what we've done in my three months is we have done a lot of outreach so far, like going out to UIS to be able to make those, those connections and making connections with other groups and ensuring that we are making personal connections. So those pieces are happening. The other pieces that are in progress are still identifying what is it that makes somebody make that change? And you are right, Alderman Donlin, that's changed. Um, the pandemic had a huge change on how people evaluate, where do I want to work? And so the answer to that question isn't the one that I've used for the last 20 years, it's a new answer. And so you've got to ask the question and you've got to listen. This piece won't take care of that because in that same data, because the Springfield information, when you look for workforce availability, there isn't one just for Springfield. So generally, I don't use Springfield MSA because it includes Menard County. I look at just Sangamon County. And here's what I know about Sangamon County. It has reduced in the number of people that are in the workforce. And that is reduced by 3%. I also know from the Bureau of Labor Statistics that the demand for jobs in Springfield is increasing. And some of those, that increase is huge. So if I just pull engineering, for example, and I'm looking at engineering, many of those are in the double digit. So our population is shrinking, our demand is increasing. And I know from the census that around the community, while we're getting smaller, some of those communities are getting larger. I also know that by that same Bureau of, of looking at the workforce availability for Sangamon County, that while the workforce total decreased by 3%, engineers, so the category that tells me the people with the requisite skills for science, engineers and computer professionals has decreased by 30%.
Oh, my gosh.
Those are the wrong numbers, um, since 2012. So I, let me make sure that data. So we have decreased our total people that are in the workforce by 3%. But in some of those categories, we have lost the people with the requisite skill. And so I'm looking at this as a math equation because that's what recruitment is. I need to find people who can do the job and will do the job. And I want a broader perspective. So what I know is we get about half the number of applicants for every job we're hiring for than we used to. And it's on a basis of many, many reasons. But the world has changed since the residency went into effect and then where it is now. Not just because of the residency, it's just changed. But because of that, the decisions that we're making are about how do we attract talent? And so as we apply and somebody applies for a job, and we're going to look to see, do you, can you do it? And then will you, do you want to? Are you, are you eager? Will you come in and, and fulfill those duties? Residency adds another way that we're evaluating it. And because it's a binary decision, you must live within the corporate guidelines, it's one that can wipe out the rest of them. So if I don't get those people at the right time, then I don't have the talent pool to be able to make good decisions. So for me, it's a, it's a math. The other piece that really changed is that COVID changed how we look at employment. And it changed where our priorities are. And so what I know about the census is that in Springfield, 45% of the people who completed the census identified as married. I also know in surrounding communities, it was over half said were married. I know the average household is two plus. So that generally, when somebody's making an employment decision, they're not just making the decision for where they'll live, they're making a decision where others in their household will live. So one story I have about somebody who joined the city before 2017 is that they moved from the Danville area. Her husband was laid off, he got a job in Havana, they moved to Petersburg, not because of a lack of commitment to Springfield, she was committed to having a career here. But because they wanted a place they could both commute, earn a living, raise their son, and also be able to get home if he had an emergency. Now I'm going to fast forward, she left the city for a while, we went and recruited her back. But now her husband has, is deceased. And she is a single income person with the city residency requirement. And the housing market said she could find a couple houses that she could afford, but they were in Jerome. So instead of buying the house, she's now renting the house. This is a 15-year employee who has shown great dedication to the city. And I don't think that that should be a choice that she has to make. She still is committed to this, this environment. So we're losing people. We lose them when we're at UIS and they say, oh, I'm just not going to talk to you. We lose them when somebody comes in and they have a Springfield address and they confuse that with meaning I'm a resident because a Springfield address doesn't mean I'm in within the corporate boundaries. And we can get all the way up and they just can't pull that trigger. The other thing that the pandemic taught us was we would always get people to re-recruit. I've always moved people, relocate, um, because kids are resilient. And I think if there's one thing we learned is there is a cap on the resiliency of our youth. And they went through a lot. And I'm seeing fewer parents willing to relocate to be able to, for a job because they just can't pile one more thing. Um, they're committed. Uh, so mine is, I love my community and I'm in it. I'm in it, I'm here. I want to make sure that we can find the people that can do the job and will do the job and that will do the work we need because for every day longer, it costs us money. It costs us productivity. It costs us in my staff time when we get all the way up and they say, I just can't move in. I just can't do that to the kids right now. And we lose them.
But they have a year to move, right?
They do have a year, but they're, that's a commitment.
We also have a waiver process, right?
For up to six months for specific criteria, but it's making a commitment.
Sure.
And many of us know that often with the job we're going into isn't going to be the job we hold our entire life. And to disrupt or make a decision is, is challenging. But, but that's, I'm coming from a recruitment standpoint. And I, I, when somebody, if I moved a block, I would be within the corporate boundaries. But I'm not. And I don't know that I can trade my 4% mortgage and mess with things and the housing market isn't there and blah, blah, blah. Um, it becomes a barrier for me to get talent. I'm, just want the barrier to be removed for a little bit because we have a number of war-worn departments who have been operating without staff and trying to do whatever they've got to do, work whatever number of hours they've got to work to get the job done and serve our citizens. And I'd like to get them some help.
Sure.
Um, so that's, that's my piece. I want them as equally committed. I'm hearing stories all the time about people who have, but I do stop and shop here before I would go home. The person that I shared said, I would always go to the grocery store on my way home, so Springfield got my money. And then she didn't want me to tell you she would usually stop for fast food, but she didn't want, she knew she ate that much fast food. But it, it's, it's that piece. Um, so for me, it's a recruitment issue.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you so much. That's very helpful.
You did a good job for your three months.
Thank you, Alderwoman. I think so, too.
Well, thank you. I also did poll because you, you had asked, so if anybody wants, I do have numbers that, um, had asked about the number of people that are in Springfield now who are outside of Springfield. Um, so we've polled those numbers. The challenge for us is there is a script that must be written to figure out the corporate boundaries. So all we can go off right now are Springfield addresses. So we are working to be able to get that script written.
No, no worries. I, I think we're probably not going to balance any budgets on, uh, this revenue that comes in from, from city employees, so, um, that's not my argument. Um, but I, I appreciate your work on that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and, um, I, I'll just wrap up with, um, this, which is truly, um, one of my chief concerns about this. You know, we all have residency requirements to hold the policymaking positions that we hold up here. And, um, if we were to pass the moratorium as it is, um, that would allow, um, us to hire people at director level and manager level and leadership positions, um, who don't have the buy-in, don't live in Springfield. And, um, yeah, just have, have a, a interest in the future of the city, essentially. So I just wanted to ask you, do, do you have any plans to hire?
The directors are all full.
Well, other management level positions from outside of the city?
In, in, um, chapter 36 with the ordinances, there is the ordinance that is the section that is about general employees. And then there is one that is about appointed positions. And that one is separate from the section that talks about general. And I'm not sure what this ordinance amends, but there, there's are two specific sections. but there, those are two specific sections.
Okay. Did you know?
Yeah, I.
There isn't any director positions open.
Right, well, not just directors. There are other people who would be in positions to, to affect policy.
Those are employees though, not, they're not.
Precisely.
For civil service.
But do they live in Springfield or don't they? Or is my question? Or my concern anyway. Yeah, do, do you know if this?
Directors would not be subject to the residency requirement if this moratorium passes.
Okay.
Director Posey, did you have something you wanted to add to that before I? Alderman Gregory, are you okay if Director Posey speaks? Thank you, Alderman Gregory.
Yes, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. I just want to speak directly to Alderman Notariano's questions. One thing I did today was I had a meeting with my counterpart in Champaign. And so they have a residency requirement on their directors in city government, but not anyone below them. So I don't, I'm not a member of city council. I don't know how you amend things and how that works. But that piece of information I did learn today. I just wanted to give you some perspective from a community standpoint because you said, you know, most people here have jobs. And what are we looking for? So for people who have worked in the same position from 2020 until now, there's usually, if they're looking for a new job, it's one of two things. If they're in the financial or the corporate world, they may not have any room to move up in the company that they're in. And with the housing market the way it is now, if you're starting a family or your family needs more space, you need the ability to make more money and have upward mobility. So we had our Leadership Springfield cohort last week here. And the mayor was there and Alderman Donlin and Alderman Hanauer were there. We have some very, very capable people in my cohort in all of the areas that we need here in the city. But some of them live in Sherman. Some of them live in Riverton. Now, their kids go to St. Al's or SHG. They go to church in Springfield. They shop at County Market. They shop at Snooks. You know, if you live in Jerome and you live on Isles, Franklin Middle School is in your backyard, but you're not considered a part of the community. So I know a lot of people are going to talk about the numbers and the finances. But from a community standpoint, I find it hard to tell someone who your kids go to school with, who you go to the same grocery store as, who you go to church or the mosque or the synagogue with, they're not a part of your community. And they can't work for your city and benefit your city. So back to the professional standpoint, if you don't have upward mobility in a banking job or a corporate job, simply because usually when you work your way up in those roles, you tend to not leave. It makes more sense to stay. You may want to apply your talents here for the city of Springfield where there are more openings and there's more room for upward mobility, especially with people who are going to be retiring coming up in the next few years. On the other side of that, if you look at the nonprofit sphere, there was a lot of work that went into keeping different programs running and alive during the pandemic. That three-year span from 2020 till now, for a lot of people, the work they had to do was like a decade's worth of work. And they're burned out in the current role that they're in. And they're looking to do something where they can benefit their community and benefit their city, but they simply need a change of scenery to recharge their batteries. So when you look at the unemployment rates and say, the majority of people who are in Springfield or in Sangamon County have jobs. Yes, they do. But many of them are looking for a lifestyle change or just a change of pace from what they've been doing. My final point, my wife and I are fortunate enough that we are closing on a house on Thursday that can accommodate our kids. I am ecstatic. We live right now in a two-bedroom duplex. In order for us to find a subletter, okay? If their credit score is not above seven hundred, they have to have double the rent and your deposit, which comes out to about forty-five hundred dollars that you have to sublet a two-bedroom duplex from now until March, which you may not be able to get back. You may not be able to afford the price it costs for rent. But it's a nice area. It's where your kids live. Now, if I'm asking someone to move from their home in Sherman where they're paying twelve hundred dollars a month for their mortgage to find forty-five hundred dollars to pay three hundred dollars a month more for a small two-bedroom duplex and they have a family, that's an unreasonable ask. But their skill set, their experience and their love for the community, if they go to church here, their kids go to school here, they shop here, whether it be shopping for clothes, shopping for goods, shopping for food, they love Springfield. They just live just outside the corporate city limits. To get from my house to my job every day, I have to drive through the middle of Leland Grove and Jerome. And it's strange because technically, they're not in the city of Springfield. Our mayor, who's doing a phenomenal job, is a graduate of Rochester High School. And you can't tell me that she does not love.
I'm not from here.
This city's real good. And I'm not from here either. And that, and that is the point that I'm speaking to. Even though we are not from here, we have become a part of this community. We are accepted and we work hard every day for this city and the people of Springfield. I think it's unfair to tell people, hey, we're going to test this out and see if we lift the residency requirement, if we can fill these spots with quality people. Say, no, 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 we want Springfield jobs to be for Springfield. Well, I would argue that the community of Springfield and that the greater Springfield area is much more than just the corporate city limits. We have our Greater Springfield Chamber of Commerce. We have our Springfield Sangamon Growth Lines to do a lot of things in Springfield, but also for the surrounding areas. I've lived in five different capital cities, including Springfield. I grew up in Trenton, New Jersey. My mom did not want me going to Trenton schools. So I lived five minutes down the road in Lawrenceville. But both of my parents worked in the city. I went to church in the city. My mom got her hair done in the city.
And, and what you say about schools hits the nail on the head because I, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up the reason we've seen population shift outward of the city. Yeah, that's, that's what people say is, is they say, I'm going to move to Chatham for the schools or so on and so forth. I just don't think that's a trend we want to reinforce or feed. But that's my opinion.
Mayor, let the record reflect that Alderman Carlson has joined the forum.
Thank you, Clerk Lesko.
I was going to make that motion. We ever got a break?
And also I just wanted to provide that information for you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Posey.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Alderman Gregory.
Real quick, and I won't be long. I agree with you, Jennifer, on, on, on our school districts and how important they are. I took a lot of notes up here and, and, and also for the community that I represent because I'm, I'm elected to represent the city of Springfield. And, and War Two and that, that, you know, I know we have some positions and, you know, it's, it's hard to, to really, you know, make a decision on, on this because there's, there's so much information that, that we really, really have to consider. And I think that we have to, to really think about it. And, you know, I, I worry about, you know, if we fill every position that everyone wants, what, what does that look like for our budget? You know, and, you know, I would lean on Alderman Hanauer, the numbers guy, to, 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 to really look at that. We budget so many, so many slots for, for a reason because we got so much budget. Alderman Donlin, you know, with our housing issues, we always talk about dealing with the ordinance and, and making changes within that. I think this is one of these cases where we have our ordinance and, and we have some situations and some, some one-off situations. It sounds to me when I, when I go to our website, there's ten jobs available. You know, I have my opinion on some of the requirements for them, but there's ten jobs available. Last week, we talked about hiring. And our police have done a wonderful job hiring in a tough, very tough climate in the last two years. They hired seventy-five officers. Sixty-five of them still remain with us under the current guidelines. Almost forty percent live outside of our, of our city. Met some of them, met some of them early morning, not, not particularly from Springfield, but very, very nice young men and we want to keep them. I think we, we, we really have to consider, you know, I, I, I heard discussion about, you know, some of the outlying towns and stuff being, having, going through the same problems that we have. So I don't, I don't know how that's really going to benefit us. I, I, you know, I worry that we're going to find ourselves in a position where, where somebody from Peoria or, or, or Bloomington or someone with thirty to forty-five minutes away and, and, and be working for the city of Springfield. I don't, I just, I don't know. I have my druthers with that. Our lineman, I support you guys having what you need to, to operate every day. And if we need to focus on getting linemen, good linemen, qualified linemen, whether it's Springfield or some of our tight, close towns, I'm, I'm all for looking at that. I'm all for Springfield residents first. And after we exhausted all options of us, of us looking at, at somebody maybe not from here. I can agree with this unfair to make everyone, you know, live in if they have a true hardship or if we run into a situation where we just cannot fill the position. Some of these positions on here are some, some specialties. But I, but I'm not going to accept the, the cashier, you know, CWLP. We can't find nobody for that. I'm not accepting that we can't find people for public works because I know a whole bunch of people that would love to be public workers. If they don't have a TDL or a CDL, I know we have provisions in our language to help them train with that. So, so my recommendations just going forth is more job fairs. I can't say that I've seen us have a great push with, with, with this thinking that we're, we're having a hard time, not, not, not in the community in which I'm from. More partnerships, it's got to be more than UIS. It is many, many, many different organizations that, that will help you have, you know, get, get our hiring out there, job fairs, et cetera, within this city. And I just talked about our, our TDL drivers. If they need CDLs and stuff, we do have some programs to help them get their CDLs. And I think, I think going forward, you know, we, we, we talk about everyone in the country going through hiring things, COVID and this and that. But a lot of people aren't just sitting back depending on the government to take care of them. A lot of people are betting on themselves. A lot of people are going to work. And, 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 you know, I, I still run a, a, a landscape business myself, just trying to get ahead. So ultimately, I think higher wages, more incentives for people to, to work for the city of Springfield are really going to help us continue to fill jobs at the city of Springfield. We're never going to be able to compete with the state. We're going to lose some people to the state. But we have some, some, some very, very good people in this city. And they probably will come work for the city of Springfield if the pay is there and the incentives is there, you know, and leave current jobs. And then those jobs are in the same situation that we in. So it's a revolving circle and, you know, we want to build our, our, our city strong. I did some research on this and, you know, the last time this came up, when it wasn't, you know, we seen some of the outskirts boom and, and we, we, we suffered. So, so we come back with the city residency. And now here we are at this point again. So, you know, there's multiple reasons why I can't be for this particular moratorium. But I look forward to working on, on our Springfield preference ordinance and see if we can make that work for the best of the people of Springfield and, and, and filling as many positions as we, we fiscally can, can really do. Thank you.
Alderman Rockford.
Thank you. In, in speaking on this moratorium, we have not even spoken about a, a timeframe. So does anybody have an idea on how long this moratorium will last? Are we going to talk about that at all?
If there was a crystal ball to tell me when the worker shortage would end, I would put it in there.
Well, how about we get a list of how many, how many jobs are open right now? Do we, do we know that?
There are seventeen positions posted.
Seventeen positions?
We're hiring right now with thirty-four. Some are closed and in interviewing. So first, those, but I've got, we've got about thirty-four that we're working with hiring. That does not include our fire.
The mic.
I'm so sorry. I saw your hand gestures.
I don't like the limelight. So this is, so staying back somewhere is good. We are currently, there are thirty-four positioned and those don't include the ones that we're doing for the police department or the fire department. We've got a total of about seventy. That's a changing number, like if an offer went out today that I don't know about or we received information for a posting. But that was the last place that I put it because I meet with the recruiters every week. We go over where they are, what our strategies are, et cetera. So we were at seventy the last time I hit those numbers.
Seventy, that's including police and fire?
Yes, it is. And there are about thirty-four at the time that I looked that were not police and fire. So there's seventeen posted because we'll pull down postings as we're, because it closes. And so we're doing the interview process or we're in background checks. Wherever, there's a variety of places we can be.
Sure. So.
Go ahead.
So this, you look in this crystal ball, like you said.
I'd love to have it.
Three months, we fill all these positions. We're going to revisit this and say, hey, we're going to do, do away with this moratorium?
If the worker shortage gets fixed.
I mean, is it going to be etched in stone or we're just going to do by word of mouth?
Well, I say we make a, I'd say I make a, I'll make a motion. We, we look at it in a year. I wouldn't go six months.
But if the jobs were filled in three months, why would we go in a year?
We'll revisit it. Well, let's go to six months then, Larry. Let's split the difference.
I'm asking, it's not my ordinance.
I'll split the difference with you.
You don't have to split anything with me. I'm asking a simple question.
Oh, no, I agree.
The ordinance is up here and there's no, no language in it. I'm asking, is there a timeframe?
That's what I'm saying. Well, I'll make a motion to go six months.
That's all I'm asking.
I'll second your, I'll second your motion.
So Alderman Carlson, can you please speak to what you're?
I say, well, I make a motion that the city revisit, give us, give council the numbers after six months upon the passage of this moratorium to see if, obviously, any movement in the numbers, if we have more, you know, job applications. So I guess we'll have to narrow it down.
What numbers?
When would this kick in? Let's say it kicks in, what's the effective date on this? If we?
Upon passage.
Okay, upon passage. So let's say six months from, you know, tonight or tomorrow.
But then, what, when you mean numbers, you mean the number?
Well, let's just say, right, right. Let's start from ground zero tomorrow. How many, how many vacancies we have? How many people are applying? And then in six months, how many vacancies we have? And how many people are applying there? I'd be happy to, you know, I'd be happy to entertain any discussion on that. But I think at a minimum, I think that's what we're looking at.
I, I think I need a, before I even begin to put that down in an amendment, I would need a point of clarification with our HR director on what vacancies are because those numbers that you provided would be posted.
Yes.
Available positions.
Yes.
Not vacancies.
Yes.
Because there would be vacant positions that there's not a posting for.
Right.
For some reason or another.
No, I, I use that interchange. Well, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Point of order, Mayor.
Alderman Donlin.
Since, since we've had a amendment pop up, so to speak, to the proposed amendment, if I can, part of the issue that I discussed earlier was we have this fire testing process as an example in which the numbers have considerably gone down over the years. It was seven hundred plus just a few short years ago. And now we're down as far as applicants go. And that isn't going to be even, we're not even going to test. We're not going to go through that process in the next six months. It's going to take longer than that. So just for information and consideration, there's, there's a number of things going on. We have the vacancies that you talked about, Alderman Rockford. There's no question there. And how are we filling them and where we're going, going to be? If I can make a suggestion, and you can take it if you want or not, that I don't think it hurts to, and, and corporatist council will probably like this one. I don't think it hurts to revisit it, meaning have the discussion in a, you know, certain amount of time. But in order to see the true impact and analyze the numbers, it's going to take longer because we have this, as an example, again, the fire process. It takes a while. And it's not even, I don't even think we have a, we're, we're open right now. So anyway, just food for thought.
So Alderman Carlson, do you have a motion?
Well, I think I would stay with my motion. Let me ask corporatist, yeah, I would just, the point I'm trying to make was we need some sort of benchmarks, if you will, if we're going to do this moratorium or if we're going to do the test this, whether it's six, you know, six months a year or three months. So I think what Alderman Donald is saying is, hey, we're just, without any specifics, just saying we will revisit it as a council in X amount of months? Six months, three months, nine months?
Point of information, Corporatist Council. I, I think it's important to, one, know how many firefighters we need until we get to our full capacity. I know it's, what, two, two seventy for the police? And, and we're about twenty, twenty-five off from that. And I think it's really important just to, just to make sure, you know, And I think it's really important, um, just to, just to make sure, you you know, the the amendment is correct of how many, um, firefighters we're looking to get to.
I'm not sure we have an amendment yet, though.
Okay, I'm I'm just saying for for their potential amendment of how many firefighters we're trying to get to, do we need twenty more, thirty more? And and we also need to have clarification on how many is on the current list because the there's current list is is active for a year and they normally go through those bands, um, as as they need firefighters.
So, hang on, I've got three other people. First, let me go back to Alderman Carlson because I just want to finish, do you have an amendment to this or not? Instead of us?
Well, I mean, again, I think I'll follow with Alderman Donlin, can we, should this uh, ordinance pass tonight? I guess we'll keep it broad and say, can we revisit this in six months? Is that Corporal Council?
You can, you can make that motion, um, to amend the ordinance. Now, if the council were to revisit the ordinance with with that language, if we use that language, that means it would still remain in place. So there would be a discussion at at the council meeting in six months, but unless further action were taken. Unless further action were taken, the mor- the moratorium would be in place. So I don't want council to confuse that with a sunset clause.
Oh, that's fine, I'm not talking about sunset, I'm talking about, yeah, passage of the moratorium with I'm in favor of. And really, I'd like to go a year, but that that might be my amendment, that the city council revisits the moratorium in one year.
So Alderman Carlson, you have a motion for an amendment that we revisit the moratorium in one year. Is there a second for his amendment? Alderwoman said second, now we're in discussion phase, that makes me feel much better. Alderman Redpath.
Well, first off, the discussion about the six months is, uh, not enough time. And I think a year is more feasible. We get to the point, we say, hey, it's working, we take it off, we say it's not working, we we continue it. Uh, we got another variable in this, the the whole discussion that's coming up in about three months, and that's called the budget. Every department's going to come in here now and they're going to speak to us about how many, how short they are. And why don't you tell me you're not? Because I know you all are, every, every department is 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 low and every department needs help. And it's not necessarily the, just hiring outside the city, it's just that in general, you need help. I can tell you that, I know about the utility, I know about public works, I know about the police department, uh, every one of them needs help. And we're going to have to do that. So the budget's coming and we're going to hear about more increases because we're not to the point where we are, where we need to be with the police department. We're adding them as fast as we can add them, but we're way behind still. We need to get to a certain point where where, we don't even have a traffic division. We used to listen to, uh, Alderman, uh, DeCento over here talk about where's our, uh, traffic enforcement? They do the best they can, but they don't have enough people. We got to find enough numbers to make sure that we cover the city. Safety is the most important thing to our citizens, ask them and they'll tell you, safety is the most important thing. Uh, every department's important to us, but we got to make sure we fix that police department. And I know the mayor's got a good handle on it right now and we're we're moving forward. But a year is reasonable, six months is way too short, uh, and we just got to remember, three months, we're going to be in a budget.
So we're in discussion on Alderman Carlson's amendment, Alderman Hanauer, you had something to add to the discussion?
Yeah, I think, and I agree, a a year with the with the with the trend, the 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 graph that we got, if you look, six months wouldn't have been enough to really tell you where we we land. And I think that we we need to look at, it's not just who we hire, it's how many applicants we have. You know, that's, that's where I see the, where we got to look at the benchmark at at number, how how we're doing with applicants now versus how we're going to do if this moratorium goes into place. Because, um, you know, filling jobs, that's one thing, but but we got, we got to get more applications in. And and not just for police and fire, but, you know, and we we got to get the best, you know, the best people we can. And so, um, I appreciate you moving that to to one year.
Any other discussion on the amendment right now with Alderman Carlson? So we have a motion and a second for his, Alderman Carlson's amendment to revisit this in a year. Can I get a motion or roll call vote for those in favor of that? Say, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Nay.
Alderman Williams. Alderman Rockford. Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman Notariano.
Aye.
Alderman Carlson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Countley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Eight ayes and two noes, Mayor.
Thank you, Clerk Lesko. Okay, back to the?
Back to our program.
With two, two amendments now, Alderman Hanauer, you're the next signed up to speak.
Thank you, um, you know, this is about competition and and competing against other municipalities and and other businesses and everything to try to get more applicants in. And that's what, that's what this is all about. And we've seen a drop in the in the number of applicants and and there's, there's many factors. And, you know, I'm sure it's not just residency, but that that is one factor. And, uh, you know, we we talk about buy-in. People, people think that if you don't live in the city proper, that you don't have buy-in. I got a brother that retired last year, did thirty-five years with the city. He lives outside the city limits, he lives in the Springfield Township or whatever it is. And and he worked his butt off for this city. And we've got, I think when we're saying that if you don't live in the city, that you don't have buy-in, it's a disgrace to the to the employees that don't live in the city that work their butts off out here. That's a shame that we would even say that because I guarantee you the the employees care. You know, I I I mean, you know, we talk about housing. Housing, you know, the the interest rates are up, we're forcing people to to move. And, you know, last, last year or up, this year, we've had twenty-five new housing starts, not including the Nehemiah Project. They've had, I don't, and I don't know how many that is. And of the twenty-five out that are outside of that, the average, average price of the houses are over five hundred thousand dollars. The average price of a duplex, each side of a duplex is three hundred and twenty-five thousand. A new employee here at the city cannot afford that. They're, they're, they're short on inventory, you ask any realtor, they, they're concerned about the whole real estate industry right now because there's no invent inventory. I've got friends of mine that 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 have been in real estate for years that are now starting to think they're going to have to get a different job because there just isn't enough real estate out there to sell. And it's a problem. So, you know, and then we talk about, and and schools are part of it, whether we like it or not, some people want to go to Chatham or want to go to Rochester and, you know, uh, New Berlin. We've got all kinds of different school districts in this city. I I think I've got two or three, I know Chuck, you've got three, uh, you've got two or three. You know, most of us do. And, you know, oddly enough, the the school district takes the the most amount of your your property tax dollars. Take the most amount, one eighty-six does. And guess what? They don't require their teachers to live in the district. So the people that are for residency, why are they not raising all kinds of holy heck with the school district about it? And you know why the school district doesn't do it? Because they wouldn't be able to get enough teachers. And that's what it's all about. You know, I would love, in a, in a perfect world, it'd be great if everybody could live in the city of Springfield. But, you know, we got people that that that, you know, in Jer- in Jerome, New Ber- or Jerome and, uh, Leland Grove, that we're saying, no, you're not good enough to work here? That that's ridiculous. And I just think that we got to do whatever we can to attract more applicants and get the best people for the job. End of sermon.
Alderman Williams?
Yes, thank you. Most of my questions have been answered, so I'm down to, so the city of Peoria uses position specific. So, uh, HR, did we consider that?
Did we consider, well?
Using position specific, meaning don't open this thing all the way out for every job in the city. But if you have issues with trying to fill a position, then identify or target those positions and put a moratorium on those positions for a while until they improve and then revisit and all this other stuff you guys are talking. But right now, it's like, you just threw the whole thing out? No, we're just going to open it up for every position, am I right?
Well, it's a couple of things, um, we are seeing the applications be reduced for every position. There are some that are harder than others, um, and certainly some that I would focus. My understanding of Peoria's residency requirements isn't just that they lift for, but that they have different requirements based on different positions and union contracts and that the majority have to be within twenty miles of City Hall, whether it's within the residency or not, which is similar, I think, to what Bloomington has. But I, again, what we did was we asked municipalities, um, what the residency requirements were and are basing that on the emails we got, so I haven't gone and done research beyond that. So the numbers and the recruiting and the time to fill has been more broad-based. As I talked to, um, the two people who do the majority of the recruiting and was asking specifically so that I could answer a couple of questions about position or how often it comes up, they said it's really coming up on a consistent basis, uh, so it was affecting more than just a single position.
Okay, well, I just think we're not having this problem to me. Throughout the whole entire city, not having applications come in doesn't mean, I mean, we've been operating all this time. Even before Mayor Busch, we were operating. Now the police has issues, then that's position specific. Linemen, they're position specific. But to open it all up, I just feel that we don't need to do that to other area. We already addressed expiration or some type of sunset, but we passed the amendment. I can live with, you know, in a year we'll revisit and to see how this go. But I want to ask you as HR, so do you know of anybody waiting for once this passes that you're going to hire that doesn't live in Springfield right now, but you're going to hire as soon as this passes?
I know two people that we lost at the end of the hiring process.
That's that's on the list or that you know that are waiting?
But we don't get that far if they're not residents right now. I have a, I have a staff member who is waiting, who took the job with the intention of moving into Springfield, who, um, has been looking for houses and can't find one and is definitely watching the residency because they're going to have to make a painful decision.
Yeah, well, I'm not talking.
I think the waiter replied there, I'm so sorry. Alderman?
Yes, I'm sorry. My question is, is there a list or do you have any knowledge of anybody outside of Springfield that's waiting to be hired? But they can't get hired until we pass this ordinance? Or do you have any knowledge of any people like that? Not your staff, not any of those kind of things?
I, I do not have anybody that we've put a hold on a position waiting for this residency decision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Alderman Williams?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, Alderman Carlson.
Uh, in closing here, thanks, everybody, for voting for that motion. But I just want to say that this moratorium is is the right thing to do to me and it's the right thing to do now. You know, city government still has to function. You know, city services still have to be provided to our citizens. And to me, it's, it's incumbent upon us as leaders, elected officials of the city to make sure that that the city services continue to function appropriately in a right and orderly fashion for the residents, uh, of the city of Springfield. So I am, I'm, I'm proud to be supporting, supporting this moratorium and and looking at it after another year. I think it's going to, hopefully, it's going to, it's going to change some things, uh, but I would, I would urge a a yes vote.
Alderman Gregory.
My final thing, I I had asked for a point of information for some information, but we moved on. But normally you get those information when you ask.
What information did you need, sir?
I asked, um, Corporal Council, um, about?
Oh, fire and police. I was just trying to move on because it wasn't specific to that amendment, so we can get that now.
No, I understand. Do you, do you know that information?
Well, I don't know that he's going to have that. There may be more of a HR.
It shouldn't be hard, um, she should have that information. How many, how many are we off until we're fully staffed?
Chief Scarlett would know for?
Police.
I know that we are hoping to fight, to hire twenty-one police officers out of this current class and that we are hoping to fi- hire fifteen firefighters out of this particular class. I know that our current head count is two twenty-three for officers and two hundred and four for firefighters. But I didn't know chief was here, so he'll give you the better data.
Chief Scarlett, you can come up to the microphone.
That's what I want to, I just want to know what what a fully staffed police department is and a fully staffed fire department.
Our authorized strength right now is two hundred and fifty-four. We have not seen authorized strength in probably ten years.
Thank you. So how many are we off, you said two twenty?
We are currently sitting at two thirty-six is where we're at.
And we need to be at two?
Two fifty-four is our authorized strength right now. Now, I will say that that's, um, you know, at our high point, when we're able to provide efficient services in the city of Springfield, two eighty-two was the, our authorized strength. And that's certainly something that I'm striving to get closer towards as we move forward in this budget.
That's what I want to, I want to know that that top number where we're at two eighty-two, thank you, that that's important.
If I could just add a few more points, um, obviously, we have several retirements that are forecasted. Uh, we are in the process of testing phase right now that we have marketed and advertised at every college, every high school, every military base, uh, every job fair, every church around. And, uh, we have twenty people that have taken our test over the last two days. Now, we have one more day and I pray to God that we get a lot of people on that list. But, um, I would beg to have three hundred and fifteen applicants for the Springfield Police Force, we're nowhere close to that.
On the current, on the current list, is about, is it expired and and no longer, um, active? We can't select from that anymore?
No, our lists don't expire, our list, we run out of people. I mean, we're, we're going through lists three times a year because we don't get enough qualified people, uh, to hire eight to ten per round.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, um, and 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 just my, my final things is?
Alderman, before you finish, DC Wood is here for fire.
Oh, yes, 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 for fire. Don't leave.
Yeah, my name is Matt Wood, uh, Division Chief here, uh, Deputy Division Chief of the Fire Department. Uh, Chief Kane is out of town, so that's why he's not here. Uh, but what I was told was two twenty-three is our top number, uh, but currently we're at two oh four. And, uh, we are expecting a lot of retirements here in the next, I mean, it's been going on for years with us.
Absolutely.
So, uh, I think we're looking anywhere, we have the possibility up between fifty and seventy-five retirements here shortly, up in the next two years.
Okay.
So.
And how many, um, we we just had some classes, correct?
Correct, we just brought on twenty-one.
There are some in the back.
Fourteen, I'm sorry, fourteen.
She said, yeah, right.
Okay, and, um, are the people in red, the recruits?
Some of them are, yes.
All right.
They are here. Thank you for sharing that.
Okay, so I lost my train of thought. So two twenty-three is where we want to be, we're at two oh four now, um, and do we got a current class going?
We do, we do not have a current class going right now, but we are in between, we just finished up one and I believe we're going to be starting one shortly, beginning of the year, I believe so, yeah.
And do you, does the Fire Department have a list as well that we that we go by and try to get through?
Yes, that would be through the civil service and through HR, the civil service list.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, thank you. And 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 I would just say, you know, for our budget director, I I think it's important for us to to really, um, because I I have no problem, you know, voting for us to get to two eighty-two and two twenty-three. But I want to see how it affects our budget, uh, with us at that full staff, I think that's important. I think it brings some understanding to why we, uh, are not there at times. You know, I think we've had this discussion before about different things and different raises and, um, some of us didn't think we could do it and some of us could, but but the premises behind it, we said we'll have to cut the fat meat. You know what the fat meat is? The fat meat is the services that we provide to the citizens of Springfield. That's what the fat meat is. So we have to be careful, we budget for a reason, we would love to have a full police force, we would love to have a full fires, uh, Fire Department. And I'm sure we'd love to have, uh, uh, more TDLs and and all types of things for public works and every piece of equipment that they ever dreamed of. But we have a budget, we only bring so much in. Alderman Hanauer brought up the school district gets sixty-two percent of our property taxes, that doesn't even cover their budget. We have to supplement our pensions and sales tax and all types of crazy things just to make the city go. So so, you know, while we're making these decisions and and and, um, opening up the doors for for people to just live everywhere and work for this city, we have to understand that at at some point in time, nobody's going to live in the city of Springfield and they're all going to live in the outskirts of town because that's where it's better at. When you look for a home, I want to be a homeowner too, Ethan. And when you look for it, the first thing that pops up is the school district in which that house is. And and when it pops up and it pops up land fair and southeast and all those things, I wanted to have. I want it to have not only a, a good price on the house, but somewhere where people are going to want to stay in the city of Springfield as well. Because right now, if you live on the outskirts of town, out in, in many areas, those kids go to those better schools, those kids go to those, those, those parents want to send their kids to what's perceived as better schools, but just imagine if we had a school out west, because we were saving that 40 to 60 million dollars or whatever it is, city would look totally different, and then we're talking about raising property value, and people wanting to build more houses and do things. So, you know, I'm, I'm totally with the Mayor's initiative of Build Springfield, but I'm for real about it, and I don't see this as a way of building Springfield, so thank you.
Alderwoman Conley, are you still on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Would you like to speak before we open it up to the public who has signed up to speak?
No, I, I think the most of the points that I would like to make have been made. Appreciate the conversation, thank you, everybody.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Alderman Redpath?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Alderman Redpath?
So you're, we're, we're driving to that point with our numbers, and one of the biggest problems we have, as you know, is traffic, and what is our number of traffic officers now?
We currently have one sergeant and one traffic officer assigned to our traffic division.
For the whole city of Springfield?
For all 77 square miles.
So what was, what, where were you when we were at the peak in our traffic division?
High watermark was probably six to eight traffic officers and a supervisor.
Okay, are you, are you planning to address that in the budget coming up?
That is in my budget request for next year.
And, and again, back to Alderman DeCenso, who screamed and yelled about traffic division, she was right, and you know, and you agree with that, because we, we don't have enough traffic officers right now. We can't keep up with them, it's a disaster out there, and it's dangerous out there.
And those are critical decisions that I, as a leader of the organization, had to make, that we had to pull from some of the ancillary positions to ensure that there were enough officers answering calls for service, and in fact, that leads to traffic issues, more accidents, more problems throughout Springfield that we now need to address.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we do have many people's, oh, sorry, Alderwoman Purchase, my apologies, Alderwoman.
Thank you. I think that this has been a very healthy discussion, and I want to thank the directors that came up to speak, because there are a lot of people watching, we have been flooded with emails for the last seven to eight days of people saying, "Vote for this," people saying, "Don't vote for this," and some of these testimonies that we heard from you, those are not everyday conversations we get to have with you all. So I think it was healthy today, and I urge our, my colleagues to vote for this ordinance, and I also thank Alderman Carlson for bringing in that timeline, because I know that had been a concern since last week or the week before, about how long would this take, and I had a few notes to ax, but a lot of it has been addressed tonight, and I think just those benchmarks in place, people talk about not being involved in the process, and I think you're doing a good job of involving us in the process and continuing to bring it forward when we have success. Sometimes we like to pick on all the negative things that happen, bring up ordinances for a reason, so I think we should also channel in on some of the positivity that's going on, so when we do have these positions getting filled, talk about them.
Will do. Thank you, Alderwoman. So we do have many members of the group here tonight signed up to speak from the audience, and I just want to ask that we adhere to the five-minute rule, please, we're going to watch the timer, and the clerk's going to be in charge of the timer, so at this point, the first person signed up to speak is Joe McMiniman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
We've been at this for an hour and 20 minutes already, so, you know, it's not great to be up here after all that, but, and I'm not going to revisit all the statistics and the history that I went through two weeks ago, except for the fact that in year 2000, we had 100% of our employees residing within our city, and by 2016, we had lost 40% of our city employees and their families, their households, and so it took a huge grassroots effort to turn that around, and to get on the books what we have now. And without a sunset clause, I'm, I'm, it's very concerned that what happened in year 2000 will happen all over again, and we'll have 40% or more, we're down to 30% based on the numbers that I got a few months ago, Director, and you did a good job, by the way, analyzing everything, I, I thought. So we were 40% outside the city in 2016, now it's 30%. In 2016, when we got the ordinance in place, 57% of our firefighters were outside of our city, 57% were outside of our city, and so the real concern is losing that solid middle-class backbone of our city, and the income that goes with it. So last time I talked about, if the state payroll is 100 million, and a third of our employees now are outside the city, you know, that's $30 million leaving our city, but what I want to add to that is, what do you think the total of our pension benefits is when you add up IMRF, police, fire, et cetera? It's close to $90 million, so if our residents put all that money together, and now they're sending it outside our city limits, you know, our taxpayers, that's money that's not circulating with our restaurants, our businesses, et cetera, and so we, we lose economic vitality, we lose a lot more than that. We're, we're transferring our wealth outside the city, so I'm at two minutes and 20...okay, I just want to, you know, we talked a lot about where are we at with our hiring and so forth, and I agree that when the unemployment rate is 10%, you get a whole bunch more applicants in the door, but when, but when the unemployment rate is 4%, as you pointed out, Director, we're trying to recruit already hired people, and, and encourage them to go for upward mobility with our city, and let's not forget that our median pay in our city is about $80,000 a year. Pretty soon, 25% of our employees will be making over $100,000 a year. We want that money circulating within our city. We've got strong competition out there outside of our city, those villages, we don't want to be subsidizing the growth of our, of our competition, period. I want to talk a little bit about, you know, where are we at with our hired versus open positions, that kind of thing. So Alderman Turner and I, 10 years ago, we said, "We want a report from HR every month," and I don't know if you had a chance to put in your monthly report, so I looked at, when I was sat in that seat there in February, my last report I got from the city for, take utility out of it, because, you know, we've retired four power plants, so it's hard to measure what, what's happening within our utility, but as of February, our head count, our head count was 846, 846. You know what it was 10 years earlier? A lower number. 10 years earlier, it was a lower number, it was 838. So everyone around here is saying, "Oh, we're short, we're short, we're short that," but these numbers don't lie, and I think there's some misinformation going on out here, and that's troublesome. What's going on here? I think Alderman Rockford, you asked some good questions, tried to pinpoint, so I think the better solutions are, okay, yeah, we've got a tight labor market, a tight housing market, give people two years to move in, that's particularly important to the married people that want to come in, it's not so important for the single people, because you can, you can get an apartment, but give folks more time to move in. You know, historically, on our postings, okay, I'm out of time, but I would love to say more.
Thank you, sir. Diane Howard.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hello, everybody, I'm here, first of all, I'm not looking for a city job, I'm not, I'm not looking, I have a job. I'm a homeowner here in Springfield, I've been, I'm born and raised in Springfield, Illinois. Just to give a little bit of background, my mother had nine children, all, well, seven of us graduated from Springfield Public Schools. Those children had 27, I have 27 nieces and nephews, who've, of the 27, seven of them are still living here, of the 27, seven are still living in Springfield, 27. Of those 27, 22 have bachelor's degrees. You understand what I'm saying? Twen- all, 22 have applied to work with the city of Springfield, including myself. I'm a Navy veteran, I graduated cum laude with my bachelor's degree in law office administration, but the city of Springfield has thrown my application in the circular file for things that I was qualified for. This is disheartening. It's disheartening to hear that you feel you need to go outside of Springfield to find someone, and they're here, they are here, you're not reaching out to them, they're at McDonald's, they're at Burger King, you ever heard about people with bachelor's degrees working in, in, in low-paying jobs? Because they are not given a chance here, because you're not going by their education or their experience, you're going by who knows who. It's a longstanding tradition of Springfield, city of Springfield, only hiring those people who know somebody or were put forth by somebody. But I'm going to tell you like this here, you're wrong if you go outside of Springfield, if you want to be a city employee, you need to live here, you need to make sure that everything is being done right for your homeowners, your, your, your schools. If you're not living here, you don't care, you can pretend to care, just like you pretend to care on any other job, but you don't care for real unless it affects you. You like statistics, them are some statistics for you. You're running our families off. Every child that goes to Springfield Public Schools hopes that one day they can work for the city of Springfield, but the city of Springfield has a clique going on, and it's been going on for years, you've been here three months, I hope you're changing it, you've been here six months, I hope you're changing it, but there's a clique, it has nothing to do with your education or experience. To work for the city of Springfield, that's my issue with you going outside of Springfield. You want to, you want to live in Jerome? Work in Jerome, work for the city of Jerome, make that better. They, that's wrong. There are too many young boys and girls, where they go? They live in Springfield that want these jobs, that need these jobs, that deserve these jobs, they deserve it. Springfield residents deserve to be able to work for their city, and they don't need to compete with somebody who doesn't live here. We live here, this is our city.
Thank you, ma'am. Next signed up to speak is Jenny Dahl.
Hello, I'm Jenny Dahl, and I, I'm in Ward Seven. I could not have said it any better than the last speaker, and I, I totally 100% agree with her. I also am a lifelong resident of Springfield, I've lived on the southeast side growing up, I raised my family on the north end, and I currently live on the west end, and I, I love this town, and it, it seems to me as though I'm not hearing the council members and even the mayor be cheerleaders for our city like you would expect. At the end, after the discussion, it almost made me feel like, why do I live here? It's, is, the schools aren't good, the, the houses aren't good, it's just, it, it was sad, so that's, I appreciate having this chance to express my opinion, and as I said, I totally agree with the last speaker. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next signed up to speak is George Tinkman, Tinkum, sorry, George, I might have said your name wrong there, Tinkum, I believe.
It's pretty close.
Okay, sorry.
Trust me, there, I've been called worse.
Correct me, what is it, George?
Tinkum.
Tinkum, there we go, thank you.
I could go on how the Celts came up with that name, but, you know, it's another story. Good evening, it's good to see you, thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman, thank you. Frankly, I, I was kind of impressed with how you worked your way through all this tonight, and, and I, I like the idea of Ward Seven Councilman's Amendment, but there is extending this for a year, having this moratorium for a year. One of the things I would point out, the difference between a sunset provision and just revisiting, and that's basically burden of, I, I call it burden of proof, but it's, it's the duty of the city council to make a change or not a change. If you don't have a sunset provision, and the city council does nothing, then it just continues. If it's tabled, it continues, and a moratorium that is indefinite in length is a permanent change in the, in the ordinance, and frankly, I, I think you're better served if you have a sunset provision where the city council has to actually go through the mechanism, mechanism of determining whether this needs to be continued, and if they can't justify continuing, then it's not continued, and it really does last only a year. I, I think that what we, I think it was Alderman Williams that talked about position-specific. If we have a problem, address the problem. You know, you, you've got the, the baby, you've got the bath water, you know, just, you know, throw, make the changes where you need to make the changes. As a matter of fact, the existing ordinance talks about a permanent waiver of residence requirements, that's right on the books right now. Now, branded, it says that there has to be a showing of extreme hardship, I guess that could be extreme hardship for the individual applying for a job, or an extreme hardship for the city itself, and the city council is the sole determiner of whether that extreme hardship exists. You're in a position to do that right now with the existing language. So what I would suggest, and, and incidentally, as I understand it from looking over the, the proposed language of the amendment, here we go, is that this basically amends not just the, the numbers in subsection E of the, of 36 dot 05, but it also changes the entire 36 point 05, and that would include sub C that says, "Any person employed by the city who shall move his residence outside the city limits," I'm paraphrasing, "shall have, shall submit his resignation or have his employment terminated." That's, that's a pretty big change right there. If we just stick with E that talks about how long waivers can exist, and we go with the suggested one year, with a sunset provision, so that you have to dig in, say, "Okay, we've got to justify it, if we can justify it after one year, then we're going to continue it," then I think we've got something, and I, I hope that you'd consider that, and it's, pretty hard for me to come up here and suggest an amendment, but basically, that's what I'm asking you to consider. I think that will serve a lot of people's needs, and please, just limit it to subsection E, because that's all we're looking at in terms of length of waiver. I've got another minute to rattle on, but if, if there's any questions, have at me. Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next person signed up to speak is Aaron Guernsey.
All right, thank you for having me tonight, my name's Aaron Guernsey, I'm the president of the Central Illinois Building and Construction Trades Council. I'm going to make this brief, I won't even hit close to five minutes, but there's a lot of good things going on in Springfield right now, and I disagree with some of the discussion that was going on about the schools, you're building new schools right now, you're revamping schools right now, and that's what draws young folks to town. The jobs that are out there, I'm not saying that Springfield people couldn't fill them, but I think you should use this moratorium as more of a recruiting process, to find people and bring them to the city of Springfield. Maybe it's not that you have to look at it as, "We have to close our doors to keep people here," maybe you ought to open them up to bring people in. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next person signed up to speak is David Wells.
David's not here, he's traveling.
Okay. Mr. Winkler, do you want to take his spot? Are you speaking? Okay, the next, the next person signed up to speak is Brad Shivey.
My name is Brad Shivey, 1615 North Dirksen Parkway, and I want to thank you for inviting me to the sleepover. this evening. I don't know if I brought a pillow, but, you know, I, I've heard a lot of people talk about some things tonight about MOUs and contracts and where some of these things came from, but none of the people that spoke were in the room when I was negotiating with the city and how these things took place. It was disturbing at the time when we negotiated for the residency because it was driven by, you know, political promises. At the time, what was not discussed was unfunded liability of pensions. It was talked about in here, but it was never in the proposals years ago when they came. It was just residency, 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 because it had been promised. Not because it was good for the city, because it had been promised. Now, I was in those rooms and have those proposals. And at that time, it wasn't about how do we increase individuals within the city working on these jobs. It was this is what was done, and this is it. Matter of fact, it was the only proposal by the city in those collective bargaining agreement talks. So as you talked, Alder Woman, about the MOUs and the organizations that agreed to it, most of us agreed to it under duress because it was the only proposal. So if it's the only proposal at that time, it'd be a tad bit disingenuous to say, we can't agree with that, but let's talk about wages and a financial package. Some of the things that were passed at that time also that had the same effect was the 50% local workers. I think some people sold a red herring that it would increase minority participation. I don't think it did. I would go by jobs and see five or six people who worked from the city of Springfield or worked, lived here, they all looked like me. Then, we also put organizations in precarious situations because I would have individuals when I would dispatch men and women to these jobs that have Springfield resident, you know, they have a Springfield address. So I take Brad Carlson, I send him to a job, and I find out that you live in a donut hole. So what have I done? I've taken Red Path Concrete, put them in a precarious situation where they could have liability, financial liability to the city by something that I did not mean to do and had no way to get around. So tonight, I'm not speaking as a person from labor, I'm speaking as an employer. In the last eight months, we've taken on 150 men and women. I'd put that against any industry in this community. We are having to do anything we can to get people. We're doing geo-fencing on Facebook, which, which brings in different communities to try and get where they know who we are. We're trying to do all of these different things. We're going to schools, we're going to institutions. Every single thing we can, and we're failing. We're failing. We have so many jobs. I was at a pre-job today, they said, we're gonna want 120 brothers and sisters, your organization. How many do you have? I said, well, I'll be here tomorrow, but I'm it. So the fact is, we have to look at this pragmatic. It's not politics, it's if everything changed post-COVID. I've been in this job title for over two decades, never seen it the way it is today. No matter what we do, no matter what we change in our testing and our interview process, we can't keep up. It's that simple. So today's world, every hurdle, every hurdle that is in the way of increasing your opportunity of employment of people who are going to be employees and good for the city and paid for by the taxpayers, every hurdle must be removed. Residency is not a hurdle, it's a land, it's, it's a minefield. Because it immediately stops people. I just had a job recently at Secretary of State. We had an individual was gonna come in, take the job, can't. And I'll tell you why. We all bought houses at 2.9% financing, and to buy a house now is 8%. Go change cars and see what it looks like now. A house is no different, except it's exponentially more money. So it sounds great. I'm speaking today strictly by what is the reality of the labor market as someone who's increased our membership by 150 men and women. And we have over 1,400. The city, say the city has 2,000, we're not far from that. So we do know the trials and tribulations that you go through. All I would say is it can't be based on politics, it can't be based on promises, it has to be based on what can be achieved and what cannot be achieved. Today is different from the days before. Thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for letting me be here. Thank you so much.
Sir. So at this point, the voting is now going, we had a motion and a second, and two amendments we passed. So can I get a?
Motion to, to move with both amendments that were passed as amended, or whatever.
Thank you.
Motion to pass it all.
Thank you, Alderman.
The whole package.
For following my chain of thought. I appreciate that.
It's been a long wait.
And he also was important.
Yeah, the Corporation Council said, and whatever is what got you to the point that you followed me.
All right.
So we have a motion and a second. Can I get just a, I guess we're gonna put the voting will now be open, Clerk Lesko correct, so a motion to approve the ordinance with the two amendments. Alder Woman Conley, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay. I'll let you call it.
Seven ayes and three nays, Mayor.
Thank you, Clerk Lesko. Thank you all for your time. The motion carries with seven voting yes, three voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023 dash 495, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Springfield Area Arts Council for the purpose of city arts, first night fireworks, and mayor's awards for the arts and general operations support in an amount not to exceed $30,000 for the office of the mayor as amended. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023 dash 495 on final passage.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second discussion. I'll open it like I did before, up to those in the horseshoe first before those in the chambers. Does anyone in the horseshoe have anything to speak on this?
My only question is, is the, where's this budgeted at?
Microphone.
I can't hear her.
I don't think it's on.
She said Gen City 107.
And where, where is that out of?
Oh, the battery's dead.
I have to go to the podium.
It's in Gen City 107.
And that was budgeted last spring or just added?
No, it was originally budgeted that way.
Thank you.
Any other persons in the horseshoe that want to speak on this particular? Okay, so we do have Sheila Walk signed up to speak.
Good evening, all. Following that long and worthwhile discussion, let's take a moment and think of your favorite art. A painting, a photograph, a piece of music, a dance step, some art. Let your mind just go there for a moment. Especially think of how that art helped you through the pandemic when we were all home. And then take a breath. I work in Ward Two, I live in Ward Five. Accompanying to me tonight is Steve Rambeck, who is our board president, a longtime educator at Lanfer High School. I thank you for your attention to the Springfield Area Arts Council. When I was here two weeks ago, I talked briefly about all the programs that we bring to the community, free, accessible, family-friendly. We're a unique organization in that, and in that we re-grant money to other organizations so that they can increase their arts programming. No one else in town does that. But there's more. The Springfield Area Arts Council, with a staff of one, is the Illinois State Representative at a national program, a poetry recitation contest for high school students. It's not someone from Chicago, it's not someone from the governor's office, it's someone from the Springfield Area Arts Council headquartered blocks from this chamber. On the state level, the Springfield Area Arts Council hosted a statewide arts conference, the first gathering of its kind post-pandemic, that brought 500 people to this community, staying in our hotels, shopping in our local establishments, and eating locally also. The Springfield Area Arts Council was the only arts council in the state that had a voice in the selection of the state's poet laureate two years ago. The Springfield Area Arts Council was asked to bring to the attention of all artists, for-profit, nonprofit sectors of our creative economy, a $50 million grant pool offered by the state of Illinois called the Back to Business Arts Grant. Locally, the Community Foundation for the Land of Lincoln gave the Springfield Area Arts Council money to give directly to musicians to play in local establishments when they felt safe to do so post-pandemic. We work with the county on selecting art for the new multimodal transportation system, the hub, as well as the revised, the renewed county building. And we helped the Hoagland Center for the Arts get a $1 million infrastructure grant to improve the heart of the arts in Springfield, the Hoagland Center. So while we offer all these programs, we do more, and your support at the municipal level helps us do that, and I am grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So we have a motion and a second for the ordinance to be passed. Oh, Alderman Redpath, you have something else to say?
I just want to say one thing. In 2013, I was inducted into the Lanfer High School Hall of Fame.
Oh, Lord.
But there, there is an icon right there, Steven Ramback, who, who we all know, all of us Lanfer guys know, and if he's for this, it's gotta be okay.
And thank you, thank you for flunking him in that class.
He's a good man.
I didn't realize the bar was that low.
Mr. Rambeck, I think you have a lot of graduates in this room. So we have a first and a second. I think our discussion is now over with that, so the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Alder Woman Conley, are you okay that I keep asking this?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I vote yes.
So the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. Thank you, Sheila. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023 dash 538, a resolution accepting a grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority's Strong Community Program, Round Two for the Office of Public Works for Emergency Passage. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023 dash 538 on emergency passage. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Alderman Gregory.
Ms. Mayor, just a quick question.
Sir.
Were we awarded funds in round one?
That would be a public works question here.
Yes, sir, we were.
Okay.
It's about 410,000. The, the total, the estimated total to demolish the buildings that are on the list is about 750,000.
Okay, so most of this in the first round went to demolishing structures and things of that nature?
It, it all goes to demolishing structures. I have a list with me, if you'd like to take a look at that.
No, sir, I see, I see them every day. I appreciate y'all, I just wanted some clarification. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Alder Woman Conley, how do you vote?
I vote yes, Mayor, thank you.
Uh huh. So the motion passes with 11 voting yes and none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023 dash 539, an ordinance authorizing execution of a program funding agreement with the Illinois Housing Development Authority, IDA, for the Strong Communities Grant Program for funds in the amount of 330,000, $337,000 for the Office of Public Works for Emergency Passage. The chair will now entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023 dash 539 on emergency passage. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Alder Woman Conley, how do you vote?
I vote yes, thank you.
Yep, so the motion passes with 11 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item, thank you, Director. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023 dash 540, an ordinance authorizing grant number 24 dash 0155 ORC from the State of Illinois Office of the Attorney General in the amount of $155,000 for the Organized Retail Crime Grant Program and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $155,000 for the Springfield Police Department for Emergency Passage. The chair will now entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023 dash 540 on emergency passage.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Alder Woman Conley, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
The motion passes with 11 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023 dash 541, an ordinance amending ordinance 477 dash 10 dash 23, ratifying fiscal year 25 health insurance premiums and the health benefit summary plan description for the city of Springfield active non-union and non-active retired participants for the Office of Human Resources for Emergency Passage. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023 dash 541 on emergency passage. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Alder Woman Conley, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
The motion passes with 11 voting yes, none voting no. Is there any unfinished business to bring before the council from the horseshoe? None? Is there any new business to come before the council?
Yeah, Mayor.
Alderman Rockford.
One, one question. My understanding, we had some, an incident at the Lincoln Library a week or so ago with the homeless death.
On the weekend?
Yes. Hopefully in the, in the future, we're made aware of this. I heard, I had one of my people in my ward call and ask about it, and I had no, no idea.
Okay.
So please, in the future.
Noted, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alder Woman Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Corporation Council, we spoke two weeks ago on an ordinance that I had removed, and we talked about having a working group where you brought up to speed on that to see how we could do this as a horseshoe.
Yeah, so we would need, it would need to be three. Any, any more than three, we would, we would start to get into the Open Meetings Act, Open Meetings Act issues. So the, the mayor could appoint that working group. I, I was trying to follow on the video, and it seemed like a lot of people wanted to be involved, so I'm happy to work with you. And if, if everybody who said they wanted to be involved, still wants to be involved, then I would recommend a working group with myself and maybe one point person, and then a couple other groups that could all meet to, to discuss it. That way, everybody's involved, so we could have, you know, meetings three-on-one, so everybody has their input and then see what, what works together. So however you want that to look, that's, that's how it would need to be structured.
I might also suggest that you have a conversation with Alder Woman Conley, because she made a suggestion that the working group be part of the Public Meetings Act and that more than three were there. So can you talk to her and see what your wishes are first?
Okay.
That would be good. Perfect.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Just a quick follow-up on, on that particular group. You know, I, I definitely want to be a part of it, you know, representing the ward that I do with, who experiences this quite often. But, but I think, you know, rather than having, you know, one-offs and little small groups and stuff, I think this is an important topic that we've visited several, several times, even since our new mayor has been here. And I think, you know, we, we may need to look at a special meeting where we all can be here, and we all can craft something, and we all can make the adjustments to the current order, ordinance, rather than being split off, because at times, it's, it's, it's hard to, you know, understand what Alderman Redpath is saying if he's not there, if we're not talking directly, and vice versa, because we all have different views, you know, based on where we're coming from and what we see every day. And I, I think, you know, we limit it to, you know, maybe an hour or two or whatever, but I, I think that's a good way, therefore, the public can come in and have their, have their thoughts, and, and, and we'll be transparent, and we can move on and hopefully fix this, these issues once and for all. Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
Yeah, I agree with Alderman Gregory to a point, but I think that it's important that we get it up off the ground, and then we're gonna probably bang it back to the committee of the whole. It is, is probably the proper procedure. That way, we have a base, and Alderman Gregory needs to be part of it. I know Alderman- I know Alderman Conley wants to be involved, Alderman Purchase, if they want that three, it's okay with me. If other people want to be involved, I don't know how you're gonna do that, but obviously the Open Meetings Act is, is a problem. So, but we need a base. We need a base to know exactly where we're going. And that, I think between those three, they, they can come up with some ideas, And then bring it back to us as a committee of the whole, I think is probably the proper procedure.
I'm fine with that.
I'll let you talk to Alderwoman Conley, then we can meet. Okay, awesome. For new business, I just want to bring your attention to something exciting that's going on In the city of Springfield on Friday. And I'm gonna pretend to know what I'm talking about for a moment. A gentleman by the name of The Mountain from Game of Thrones.
Yeah.
Sorry, I've never watched it. I asked if it was a video game. I hate to say. My communications director, Haley Wilson, was severely disappointed in me. But he's going to be in Springfield on Friday at the Coliseum at the Fairgrounds. At 11 a.m., there's gonna be a press conference, And there is a historic medieval tournament coming to Springfield for the weekend at the Coliseum, And he's going to be there. So you can meet The Mountain. And there is a, our communications director put something on our Facebook page about it. You can see a video where he even talks about being in Springfield, and he's from Iceland. He's an Icelandic man. You can tell from his accent, but he's gonna be in Springfield. It's very cool. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Winter is coming.
There you go. That must be a Game of Thrones reference. All right, so citizens who have signed up to address the council, the first citizen is Hakim Lukman.
Good evening, mayor, council. I would like to address one issue that I've been having between the city and the county. My property, I have three lots over on North Third. Two of the lots is county. One is city. And it's Kind of weird when you have a city employee that wants to address county issues, Or the county wants to address the city issues. And you, you know, How can, how can we come together and say, okay, this is your territory, and this is your territory? You know, with your employees.
Well, you can annex into the city the other two properties.
No. I'll annex it to the county before I go to the city.
On your own. Good luck with that.
Is that all you have, sir?
But at this point in time, okay? Because There's two, there's a conflict between the city and the county issues on my properties right there. Okay? Now, The other issue is I want the city to back off Or until after the court hearing of the lawsuit that I have against the city of Springfield, C W L P, and the Water Department For burning down my house. Till after that, Then we can discuss what else is going on about that. That's all I wanted to say. I want the harassment and everything to stop.
Thank you for your time, then. Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Alice Ramey. She's holding her head.
Thank you, Alice.
That's all right.
Make you feel taller, does it?
Yeah, it does. It does. Really tall now. Have I still got 2 minutes and 28 seconds?
Yep. Yeah, you bring you sure.
I'll leave 7 minutes, so it's okay. You know, it doesn't matter. I've been at the Capitol all day, and I believe Ward Two can tell you I was. I've heard a lot of disillusions over there, And some of them, they don't know what they're talking about, too, as you know, and you've worked over there. But that's not what I want to talk about. I want to talk about the trees. You know, the trees that are doing the gumballs and the walnuts. My driveway at one time was all driveway, pretty white, you know, ready to go. Now it's half-black, half-white, and half-purple. So I think maybe I might keep it that way, because a lot of people like it that way. But I want to thank two people very, very closely. One, I want to thank Public Works. You did what you said you were going to do, and thank you. That's what we need here. And the other person is the chief.
Which one?
Charles said that.
The chief is, did something for me that a lot of people don't know about, and it helped me out a lot. He showed me how I can cut down the trees, and it would still be legal, okay? Still be legal, all right? And I want to thank you for that. And your 9. And your 91.
Long as it's in your yard.
91 dispatch, when my, when I had my heart attack, Was one of the best I have ever had, my sister said. He has very point questions. He wasn't hostile. He wasn't loud. He was very soft. This is the first time that I had a doctor that was in residence at Memorial on the ambulance. And it was nice to know that there was someone there, because I was not there. I was in the ambulance, but I wasn't there. I had passed out. And he was there to take care of it. That's what I think every ambulance needs. And please get rid of life stride, please. I don't care what you have to do. I know several people that will help you blow it up. But I mean, seriously, we need that. We need it taken care of. Because the next-door neighbor had life stride, and she told me it was the worst thing that she ever experienced. So we need to bring it up to stiff, okay? Mr. Redpath? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I have 2 dol, 2 minutes and 25 seconds. So she did add the "by". Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Alice.
The next person signed up to speak is Pastor Levasha Hemingway. Levasha, sorry about that.
Hello, everyone. My name is Levasha Hemingway. A lot of you guys probably know my brother-in-law, which is Larry Hemingway. He does a lot of work throughout the city And things of that sort. However, I am here because, as you can see tonight, I brought a lot of youth with me. We run an at-risk program over on 1221 South 15th Street, And a lot of the information that I have seen that come across in news articles concerning this R3 grant, We have applied for that grant, and I just wanted to come here and let you know What that grant would mean for us and, and my at-risk children. We, me and my husband, which is Pastor James Hemingway, We left town, but God has called us back here, so we bought a church December 16, 2022. Since that time, we have fully remodeled, took our own money, retirement money, And all of our savings and credit cards, remodeled this facility, Stated our facility as much as we can do in this small building. However, even with this small building, there is no room in the building To have a, a area to really feed the children. So we put like picnic tables, and it worked for a while, right? That money that we applied for, our children eat outside right now. It's getting cold. I don't know what's going on with the R3. This is, again, our first year back home. But we come to invest in Springfield. We have invested over $350,000 of our own money. I am asking that you guys help. We have secured a building at 1405 Laurel Street. That R3 money will help put our children back in the building. Within two months, we done already fed, given out over 1,000 meals Our, from this at-risk program, which is funded through the USDA. So I don't know what the holdup is with everything that's going on, but what I do come here to be is an ally. I need friends of all of you guys to help, because what am I supposed to tell my children? That, that was only half of the kids. I serve over 30-something families every day. Just got to improve to also feed them on Saturday and Sunday, Because we ran such a great program in such a short period of time. Within our facility as well, I am working with farmers to bring fresh food, meats, and products That inside of the church, we have a market in the back that we can sell produce, meats, everything, And able to accept EBT link at all forms of payment for the people right inside of that red square That we, that those R3 funds are supposed to serve. I cannot continue to have these children eaten outside. I cannot continue to have them being, it's getting really cold. So the thing about it is, I am here to fight for the babies, the people that's supposed to really benefit from that R3. So I'm asking if I am also willing to put Father's House on the line To be an example of how these R3 funds are supposed to be. So I want to work with you. I want to work with all of you guys. I don't know, part of my background, I work in healthcare, and I build surgery centers. So I have budgets of $10 million budgets that I have to buy instrumentation for doctors and stuff. So I know how to write policies and procedures. If you need help, I can help you with those things. So that's what I come here today, to say, I want to be your help. I want to be your friend. What can we do so that money is not held up, And it's not taking resources away from the people that really need it? That's what I'm here for.
So I will tell you two things. I believe Director Yezel is still here. I can't really see from where I'm sitting. Okay? Have you spoken to Director Yezel, who's the Director of Economic Development?
Okay, so I did a presentation with Doug and Julie concerned with of.
Oh, Julia Cave.
Yes. Yeah, I, so I have not went up to you yet, but I have been over there.
That would be your step before us.
Yes.
If you could, speak with her, and then if you're done with her, you can talk to the HR Director, Nikki Baker, because she would talk to you about coming to work at Economic Development.
And I would, I would love to.
So that would be two birds, one stone.
I would love to. I would love to. So I, I would love to do that, but.
So both of those ladies can talk to you.
Can help me. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you for your time. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to address the council? Motion, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, most, we are adjourned. Pardon me? He's not here, so, I mean, I know what he looks like. Should I have said it out loud? If I knew Don and him wasn't here, I'd have to say it.